All right, we got the cameras on. Roll call, let's see, you got trustee Menofsky, trustee Burski, trustee Anderson, Carl Stone Wetter, Jim Wargo attorney, and fire chief Graff of Lake Bluff, and Drew Urban Village manager, is that correct?
Administrator.
Administrator, all right. All right, gentlemen, hold on one second, we're going to recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item, the agenda is public comment, there's nobody else present here, so I'm going to go ahead and say that there is no public comment. Nobody closes. All right, going on to item number four, discussion and action on leasing and use of Rock Cliff Fire Protection District Building, 14 Skokie Highway, Lake Bluff, Illinois, to the Village of Lake Bluff and Village of Lake Bluff Fire Department. Gentlemen, we did receive your IGA, I believe most of the trustees and the attorney have reviewed it, the attorney did make a couple of suggestive revisions to it, but I will, I will let you guys have the floor if you want to talk to it, talk to your intents and purposes for the requested IGA.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Graff here. The first thing I'd like to say is that you guys have been incredible that you would pull yourself together this quickly to consider something that Marc and I began talking about just a couple of days ago. But first, I want to say that I think it was probably some six weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago, that Marc and I got together just for a conversation, kind of state of affairs, trying to maintain communication relations and so forth. So I incredibly appreciated, as part of that conversation, it seemed to me that we really had an opportunity of something occurred in the future to work together, which I totally appreciated and recorded through, yeah, well, here we are, someone, oh, well, not someone, we're in a crisis, and one of the things that has bothered me, and I'd like to take a moment to share this with you because this will tell you what I think and why this request has occurred. As part of our management of the EMF system in response to the COVID-19 calls, we have some great teamwork, but specific operational directions from the Illinois Department of Health, from the Lake County Health Department, and particularly from our medical region head at the Lake Forest Hospital, as to how we're all operating, what our personal protective equipment is and so forth, the gear, what our changes are at site, how we manage these calls. One of the things that is very clearly directed all the way from CDC is what we have to do if we suspect one of our responders is potentially emulated on one of these calls. And then we're able to relate specifically, again, I may be going into more details, but I just think it's important, we all understand that, what we wear, the goggles, that certain particular type of mask, the gown, and so forth and so on. And sure, any of this protective gear be compromised, then we have to react in certain fashions, and what really occurs first is, we would need to take the first responder, one of our firefighters, one of our team members, and put them in minimum, in two day quarantine until the test of the patient determines whether the patient is positive or not positive. If the patient is not positive, then we can return our firefighter back to service. If he turns out that the patient is positive, then we must quarantine our firefighter, our member, for 14 days, okay? During that period of time to determine if he becomes positive, then various testing and monitoring over that period of time. So if this occurs on the scene, or in that first few hours, I or one of my chiefs has to make a decision whether we're going to quarantine or not, that person we do it in, the consultation with, with the hospital medical director. My wondering, or my real personal problem through all of this is, if this occurs, then we need to send someone home, and tell them they're on home confinement, and I, you know, they're quarantined, and they're married, they have a wife, they have kids. If I send them home, I'm potentially, in that moment, sending somebody home to a set that's wife and has a kid. I'm having a terrible lead hard time with this. And I've done a lot of research as to what various other alternatives are, there's been a lot of things to explore in the private sector and so forth, do we go rent a hotel? What do we do? None of them seem to make sense. Well, the other day, reading some more of this, it just came to me, we have this incredible asset, the Knollwood Fire Station, it's sitting there, in first class shape, unused, and fits the bill completely. We have a day room, we have a kitchen, we have two home areas, a male and a female area, we have locker room, showers, and we have a location that can be secured and managed. To me, this is an ideal opportunity to put the facility back to use, in the type of situation that if we ran into this, where we had to send one of our guys into quarantine, we could send them there, instead of sending them home, certainly for the first two days, if we needed to do the 14 after that, then the individual certainly would be given the opportunity to stay there if he wanted to be isolated from his family or the public, or could go home. I'm speaking now of what I envision as the operational way we would proceed with all of this type of thing. And we can set all of this up very quickly and so forth, and quite frankly, one of the things that comes to mind right away, we have the incredible benefit of having a very large proportion of our membership now as your former members, so they are incredibly knowledgeable about the building, will be part of our plan to how we would set up, obviously, we need to reintroduce into the building some boxes and some basic things to make it livable again and so forth, but we have teammates on our side that have been in the building, so they know about it and how to use it. So, thinking of that, I made a phone call and talked to Marc, and I was completely heartened by his response to the fact that we should explore this, and see if it works for the village, and see if it works for you, the board now of the Fire Protection District, which number exists to now. I went to Drew, he was completely supportive, the villages were very supportive in welcoming of the idea for the two of us to work together on this particular thing. We asked our attorney to prepare the document you received, to get things going, we feel that it's our place to assume that much of the expense and so forth of this is realistically possible, we're the ones literally asking for this. So we presented it, we've just got back the one that you sent back. Frankly, I don't really see anything, there's maybe a couple of things to talk about here, but unless Drew has something else, we're not seeing anything of particular concern from what your attorney said, and frankly, it should be to the best benefit and protection of you folks as well. So, saying all of that, sorry I rambled on, but I think the message is kind of important, this is what we're trying to do, and we're hoping we can work together. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Chief Graff. Drew, was there anything you wanted to add?
I'm just, it's, I'm surprised David made a dream about being emotional, it's a flaw, because it's an emotional subject.
It is.
And I knew the look in his eyes when we were talking about this, and I understand completely, and when he came up with this idea, I told him this was, you know, nominated for idea of the year. I think it's a great purpose, a great function, this facility is ideal for this, and this is what intergovernmental cooperation is all about, which we have a rich history of, so to me, this was, I mean, all the cylinders were hitting, so.
Excellent. I don't know if any of the other trustees or attorney have any questions right now? I'm sure you have a bunch of questions, Jim, so hold off on you.
I'm not sure if I have a bunch of questions.
Dave, Amy, any questions? I know I got a couple, but I'll let you guys go.
No, not really.
No?
Nothing I would beg of.
Carl, anything in your past experience?
No, I think, as you said, the building is completely unfurnished right now.
Yeah.
That's the only obstacle, like, so, you know, we've also talked about our use of it, I think we can work around that without much trouble at all.
Yeah, so our use as far as holding our regular monthly meetings, seeing right now with the governor's announcement today, and looking forward to what business we need to have meetings for, I don't see anything really pertinent in the foreseeable future. Obviously, if we needed to do a special meeting or something like that, Chief Graff, I know you mentioned to me over the phone on our conversation that the village would be open to us having meetings over there.
Absolutely, I think in that particular regard, I do know you have your office and access to that, and frankly, it would be very understandable if we do have people in there, you know, the idea, the hope is, we never do, but-
Absolutely.
If we have people in there, and there's a hesitancy on your part, then we could retrieve something, putting it at the doorstep or whatever that type of thing is, and certainly if you need to have a meeting, you can use the facilities or realtor, or the community meeting, that are probably safety building, Carl, you know, you've been to various meetings that we've had there in the past when we were doing a lot of fire joint stuff, all of that's available together, there's certainly no problem with that.
Okay, and then as far as our access to the building, Carl, and you're pretty much the IT department, you have remote access-
Right.
-between the systems and-
Yeah, right, for our financial systems and for the server and everything, I have remote access to that.
And I know we can't really, you know, proceed into the future, but is there any sort of documentation or hard copies of anything that either you or Amy can think of that we would need? I mean, there's obviously an option there where they can leave something at the doorway or just outside the doorway, and we could spray it with Lysol disinfectant or something if needed.
The only thing I can anticipate on that front would be if we got a FOIA request for something that we didn't have electronically, but I don't know, Jim, in a case like that, do you think we could probably get away with delaying it if we can't get access to the records?
Yeah, given the circumstances, I'd have no problem in saying that, and if they wanted to take us to court on it, so be it, I think we'll look pretty good in court.
So as far as that goes, I think, currently, tentatively, and based on a couple other logistics and legalese, use of the full building, obviously minus the office will stay alive, shouldn't be a problem. The building is, I mean, it is bare, it is a shell, the bunk room is there, the, I don't want to say the frames for the beds, but there are-
There are platforms.
The built-in platforms for four beds.
But no mattresses.
Yeah, for four beds, for four mattresses, rather, they are in the bunk room, there was a second bunk room made into like a two-person suite for the individuals that we had here more often, and then there are two restroom and shower facilities on the second floor, and then on the main floor, there are two other regular bathroom facilities.
And there are still some, oh, a bank of lockers, I believe, in the one.
And there are, yes, and there is a bank of lockers too. So that's the equipment, and that's what's in the station currently, just to let you two individuals know, Chief Graff and Drew.
And the kitchen?
And the kitchen, yes, the kitchen does have all the appliances, I believe microwave's still there, stove is there, kitchen sink and-
Refrigerator.
And the refrigerator freezer, I don't think there are any utensils or pots and pans, if any, they're very minimal, but that's a minor hurdle. That's pretty much the state of what the building is in and what's available here. Is that kind of what-
That, that would be, and that's great, and so you will know what our, my initial plan would be, is my chief Matt Marsh, and one of your very well-known former members, would be my lead team, and the two, first thing the two of them would do would be to visit inventory, plan, do the layout, so we figure what equipment, materials, and so forth we need to bring in, put the, put it ready for use and so forth, and the long, and it certainly would be my intent to keep you guys, quite frankly, and I think whichever way you want to do it, probably address the board, or however you want, I wanted to send you guys regular reports of where we are, what we're doing, and I think it's appropriate that we let you know, if there isn't that someone in there, how long they are and so forth, it would be, if you don't mind, we won't be naming them, but we will-
Of course.
...you give, or it's not, there's somebody in there.
Yeah, that would, that would be great, that would be great. Okay, must, is there any other questions?
No.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
They may or may not be legal questions, but just listening to the chief, and I understand, so there's two classes of potential firefighters here, one that has an exposure and has to be quarantined, they may or may not have COVID-19, then you have another situation where you actually have a COVID-19, somebody has, you know, has a case of it. So, is this kind of a two-step process? Initially, if you use it as quarantine, they go through a quarantine period and they get released, but then you have a situation where you actually have employees that may have been diagnosed with COVID-19, and would use the station in the same way, so that would probably prohibit, obviously, I think, just your standard quarantine for an exposure, if that makes, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand the question. Does that make sense, Chief Graff? The question?
Too quick to answer. First, I didn't recognize the voice, who offered the question?
Oh, that was Jim Wargo, the district attorney.
Okay, great, thank you, nice to talk to you, Jim. And I will tell you, it was somewhat broken up, but I think I understand, and let me just say this, and then I think I can respond. I think what Jim really put forward, and this is a great question, how do we deal with the different categories? And I would say, Jim, there's first of all three categories, there's pre-knowledge, then there's quarantine because of exposure, and third, there's if you have COVID-19, is that what the question was?
That was part of the question, but Jim, I'll try and summarize it.
You know what, I guess the easier question would be, what's the thought process here? This is in stages, because we don't have anything right now, but it could have something tomorrow, so it could develop where, and it would be somewhat of a changing use of the building in a sense.
In other words, if someone's here on quarantine, would you be bringing in someone else for that two-day waiting period, and how would that work out?
So, Chief Graff, the question pretty much is, or the hypothetical is, if you have someone in the building that has a confirmed case of COVID-19, is in the 14-day quarantine, would you then bring in a potential exposed employee into that same, into the same building or not? That's kind of the question that is being posed.
Okay, that's an excellent question, and I'll tell you how and how we're proposing to address that, and this is asked after an extensive conversation I've had with the chief medical, emergency medical officer at Lake Forest Hospital, about what we're proposing to do here, which first of all, he strongly endorsed, and then what I was talking to him about was how we would develop our management plan of the facility. Some of what we just went over here is going to depend on when we send our people to assess some of the things in the building, one of the things we want to look at is your HVA system, to try and determine if the first and the second floor are on the same HVA system, and if the Bay Area, that would have a great deal to do with the potential to separate those groups we've just identified. If we cannot separate those groups, then we really have to take another serious look as to how we might manage those various groups, and it's possible that we wouldn't be able to. It is, but I'm saying, maybe we could. So I don't have a firm answer to you, but that's a very valid question, and we would have to have firm answers to, but quite frankly, I will be getting those cleared with the hospital before we could go ahead and make the groups.
And it was not necessarily a legal question, I was just kind of curious what the thought process was, but I guess from a preliminary level, right now, the thought it's going to be used as a quarantine, we don't know whether somebody has COVID-19, it's just they've had an exposure, and certainly it works out, and it could work out either way, I was just curious how it would work out when you actually had firefighters that actually were diagnosed with COVID-19 here, and how would that work with other ones that just had an exposure?
I understand, Jim, thank you. I don't, I'm not looking at it, Jim, as a legal question, I'm looking at it as a, our obligation, how we're supposed to deal with the pre-people, and how we're supposed to behave on the medical side.
Understood.
I think in this particular case, those two views are aligned.
Understood. The other question I was, and this may not be for you, well, it is for you, chief, but I guess for the board too, security concerns, if we just have one individual here, is there any concerns on that end? Obviously, not in a high-prime area at all, but I just throw that out there, if we just have one individual.
There's really nothing left, but that's a good question.
The building's fairly secure.
Oh, yeah. So I, I don't think I have anything else for you, Chief Graff, or for you, Drew, I think the board will talk about it a little bit, and then we'll see if we get an action out of this, and hopefully, unless you guys want to stay on the call, if not, I understand you guys, I think that's all, you know, we need you guys before you fill us in on everything and on the intent.
Can we discuss, this is Drew, can we discuss for a moment, and I may ask David to talk about this a little bit, some of the modifications to the first draft of this may be a practical issue, and I wanted to talk about that. Can you maybe talk about-
Yeah, please, by all means, go ahead.
Sure, as I said, the modifications can really only be any, with the one thing that I was, the liability and that type of thing, absolutely, whatever you had, the donut and the term, okay, so that came down from the 16 days, I'm not sure, Jim, why you put in 16 days, but let me address how I view this, and then maybe, you know, I'm not worried about it particularly, the way it's worked, the way you worded it, but here's my view of the 15 days, and it says if we have somebody in the super. My thinking is, and I'm more on the 16 days, because if we have someone in there, even if they're not there at the moment, and either one of us feels, one, from our standpoint, the crisis is over, we hope to goodness, we don't have a potential need anymore, or if you find something that you will immediately need your building back for, I think that's all we need from a practicality, a given amount of time to get everything out of the building, and restore things back to the way they were, but probably as much as anything important to you guys, is we're going, we're committing here to fully clean and sanitize, so there's no question to you or anybody else, the building gets passed through the condition and so forth, so we're going to need clearly more than 15 days to accomplish those type of things, otherwise, I'm not really worried about the term, it should work on for you again, but I think practically, on a practical basis, we need more than 15 days, I think a minimum of 30, maybe 60, but I could go with you, 30, we could probably do it pretty quickly, but we're going to have to get, obviously, a license then from all of our contractor to clean it, you know?
Chief, I just put in those dates really for a discussion, and I put in 15 days just because I had a 30-day term, and I would leave that up to the board, how they want them to do the term, I don't necessarily have a problem, and I changed that 60-day date because I had a 30-day term, so that's something we can work out, but I did put in language that, you know, the term is for 30 days unless it's otherwise required, is being utilized by a village-designated personnel for necessary quarantine purposes.
So I think, you know, if you guys want to continue, sure, but I just think we're starting to get into negotiations on the IGA when we're not even at that point yet. I, but these are all valid questions and invalid discussions, I just don't think we're at that point just yet, if that's, if that's okay to bring up, so.
And sure, and just two more points to think about.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, one is the issue of, as David talked about, the identification language, and then I'll just go to EECO insurance, so we are a member of our management group, we have commercial liability insurance, I'm sure we can satisfy whatever coverage or not you were looking for, I would just, to have whatever's acceptable, if you came back and said, $100 million, we might have a problem, so, I mean, we're a municipal entity in the state of Illinois, we're solving, I'm not worried about that, unless, I was just trying to put a number in there, you know, what, a million, five million, you know, something that I just didn't want to have, you know, there should be a number there.
Whatever your standard is, I, yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Okay.
I know you're a little cloudy, I'm comfortable with that, I just, kind of something that I throw in there.
Okay, and if you want to, or if you don't, I'm certainly, whatever you want to, have a conversation about the rate, if you have questions about that, but if you want to talk, let's talk, I'd like to, you know, I'd certainly like to appeal to the government operation that we've, you know, have over the years, but I'm a practical person too, so, I just want to underscore how important this is to us, and try and take care of our people, so.
Yeah, and it's, me personally, it's important to work with you guys, and I mean, I have, I, you know, I, yes, they're friends, not literally family, but they're fire family that I have at Lake Bluff, and I want them to be taken care of in the best way possible, and I think this is a fantastic option, so that's just me personally speaking.
Mark, that's a constructive start, Drew, go ahead.
Well, and the other thing, to underscore something, just to be crystal clear, in the recitals and talks about village, we're really talking about public safety, you know, a couple of police officers potentially too, I don't want to lend it to the fire family because we have others here-
No, of course, of course.
Okay, all right, I just don't want to mislead anybody like that, so.
No, 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 I think we're just using that just because it, we just happen to be in a former fire station, so.
Do they get along?
I think Lake Bluff police and fire get along.
Marc and I think that that's our presentation, that's our request, and we're certainly, I think at this point, Drew and I to step back and let you folks have a conversation, if it's okay with you, and that's what just, maybe listen on and see what's going here, if you had to ask a question, but I'll certainly-
Yeah, absolutely.
Back to you and your board, and thank you for your consideration.
No, thank you, thank you, chief, thank you, Drew.
Many thanks to you all for hearing this out, really appreciate it.
No problem, no problem. All right, so, if there are any other questions, or other concerns, anything like that?
Nope.
So in that case, I'd like to make a motion to-
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. Oh, did you want to talk about the rate? I think for the most part-
Yeah, do you want, well, I wanted to have a- Yeah, do you want, well, I wanted to have, so what I was thinking, Jim, by all means, please get me, was to have a motion to allow you and I to continue discussions with Lake Bluff. And ironing this out and then, well, maybe we should have a discussion on rate first.
Yeah, I think we should have that first.
Okay, right, yeah, please.
Whatever, whatever thing would expedite it the quickest?
Yeah, well, I think ultimately if the board, I, I think I know where the board is going here. That if the board wants to approve this, we can approve it, subject to final attorney approval. And authorize the board president to work with the village. But we always want some parameters, just the general parameters, we don't have, there's not a lot necessary here. But one of them is, is the rate, that has been left blank and that is certainly up to, as it's drafted. Provides that they will pay the utility bills, so it kind of leaves, leaves open the question on, you know, the rate. And that is certainly possibly up to the board here on, on how that wants to be.
And so I, I mean, I obviously, not obviously, but from what I gather in, in this IGA, and Jim, Drew and Chief, please correct me if I'm wrong. Pretty much all additional expenses outside of our current mortgage and whatever insurance obligations we have on the building. Would pretty much be covered under this, right, so there's no added cost that the board would incur.
No.
And that would be based on ongoing utility costs and stuff like that, not based on this being a nice box.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, you could. You know, a couple of different ways to tackle that, one is just, okay, they can just start paying the utility bills. Or, you know, if you want to really keep it, you know, neutral, then we can calculate what the delta is between what we pay to keep the building mothballed and. You know, so, you know, we pay up, you know, the base rate and then they pay over that. That's, that's the approach, it says they're paying just strictly for what they're using.
Because we have an average cost each month, we know what that is.
Yeah, it will vary by the seasons to a certain extent, but yes, we have some history there. And there's a few other things, I can think of, there's some small stuff. Like the alarm system in the building costs us a hundred and thirty-five dollars a quarter, you know, that kind of thing. Those are some of the ongoing costs, I mean, it really is just the mortgage and that's certainly our responsibility.
Yes.
And then utilities and then any other, like if the air conditioning or the heating breaks. That might be a point to talk about is, you know, if something happens that makes that use of the building not feasible. Who's responsible for getting that taken care of, that may be another thing to consider.
I think that was covered in here. Maybe, maybe not, I'm not.
You know, and that, that becomes, you know, and leases that have negotiated, that's always an interesting when you have. Furnace air kind of HVAC system and you have provisions in there and you've got a tenant that's got six months to go. A 10 year lease and then usually what that is kind of prorated on how they, how they address. Because it's not, I know it's fair to, you know, stay them with the whole.
Luckily, over the past X number of years, it's generally a couple hundred bucks to come in, replace some valves and do some, but you lose an air handler or a, you know, or compressor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Randy, that's, that's a whole different issue.
Have we had the HVAC system checked out?
Not in about, not in about a year.
Okay.
It's about due.
Yeah.
Might be, might be.
General, general state of health of the HVAC system and. And then, but then going back to kind of the important thing here right now that we're talking about is the rate. I have no clue.
Well, Carl had the one idea of just whatever the difference is of, you know, normal operating cost.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all covered, right, for the actual, the actual entire space. I mean, do you have any thoughts, David, I mean, I know you, we're kind of maybe jumping ahead on you, someone else who potentially may be kind of sort of interested in the building, but. I'll just go on a limb and say this takes kind of precedence over that.
Yeah, I told that person, we have something else we're working on, I'll get back to you, so.
Yeah, so to kind of keep something fair, I mean, I, I don't know how municipalities work with one another as far as agreements, if there's a general rate. Drew, Chief Graff, do you have any idea if there's some sort of a standard or base rate? Or anything that's, or any sort of precedent that's been set locally?
I'm not aware of anything similar to this, this is pretty unusual or an extraordinary time.
I'll throw something out, realizing of course, I am not a board member.
No.
So just for your consideration. Seems to me to be fair that it's strictly a keep us whole operation. That the building is vacant right now, we're not getting, you know, any revenue from it. This is an extraordinary situation of public safety and I, you know, seems to me as, you know, that would not be. The board would in no way be, be.
Scriptized.
Yeah, I would say give a public scrutiny, but also that you would, you know, your fiduciary responsibility to the district is not being compromised. By, by doing this on a strictly, you know.
Cost only.
Cost only, keep us whole.
Yeah.
But that's just a, that's just a point of view.
Cost only, I mean, including mortgage or outside?
No, no, not mortgage.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay.
Because that's a cost that we, that's a fixed cost.
Right, and that, as we, as we talked about, is that every bit of the principal on the mortgage that we pay. Turns in, is equity in the building, which we will get back when the building is sold, so that's. You know, it's really the only thing that you pay is interest, that really if we were to pay the mortgage off quicker than we could get rid of it. Every penny we pay on the principal, it becomes money we get back when the building is sold.
So would it, I, I just have an idea here, so if I'm totally off the wall, further wrong, please someone correct me. So for the, for the actual rate. Based on Carl's, I don't want to say suggestion, but idea.
Just a concept.
Concept, based on Carl's concept.
One alternative.
Yeah, based on Carl's concept, the rate would be no charge of the village. And then the rest of the other, rest of the utilities and pretty much anything else associated with running the building. Not the difference, but all, all the utilities would be on, on the village, that, I'm thinking that would probably be the easiest way. That way we just cover the mortgage and then anything else during the course of the village, of Lake Bluff's use. Of, associated with the building, they cover. That's, that's my idea.
That works for me. I'm a little bit.
Any comments?
It makes sense to me, makes, makes my life easier.
Chief Drew, did we lose you, are you guys there?
We are here.
Does that sound?
I'm here, David, are you there?
David, we're on mute, yes, I'm here.
So did you guys catch all that, does that sound something that's, that we could work with?
So I, to be, if I understood you, because it's, Carl, it's hard, it seems like he's off on the distance.
Six feet away.
If I understand you, you're saying that we cover the price to turn the lights on, to keep the water running, the toilets flushing.
And obviously heating and cooling as, as needed.
Yeah, sounds fair, more than fair.
Yeah, and then, yeah, so that's, that's what I'm thinking, the other board members seem to be in agreeance, attorney seems to have no issue with it. Yeah, and, and you guys will probably have to provide your own toilet paper.
Yes, yes.
If we get five.
Okay.
Now, from the utilities, were we going to, Carl had mentioned about the difference.
No, no.
We'll just do the straight, okay, that, I think that.
Straight utilities.
I think that works.
Okay.
Assuming the village is okay with that.
I, I believe so, Drew, Chief Graff, I believe you guys were in concurrence with that?
We have, I don't expect, I've never seen your utility bills, Carl, are you the bookkeeper, is there anything unusual that we should be aware of? You guys running that thing on like a paridium or?
Right, right, you know, through this, this year, obviously we've been keeping the temperature really low, but our, our gas bill. Was typically a couple hundred bucks a month and the electric bill has been about three hundred dollars a month. It'll go up in the summer with air conditioning.
Yeah, that, that sounds all reasonable, all reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of do keep the building a little bit cooler at 50, so, you know, if you guys, you know, if you're guys, hopefully no one comes here and you, we can maintain it at 50. But if someone does come here and want to be a little more comfortable, it'd probably be a little higher than that.
Yeah, because it, it will, this building can be warmed up and cooled off fairly quickly. So you can keep it cool until you need it.
And how about the term? The chief had mentioned, and again, I had made a change here because there really was no term in here and as an attorney, when I look at that, I always, I always look at the end date and I always look at the worst case scenario. And I was, I don't.
What section, what section is it?
What I, I put in page two, I just put the term in.
Okay.
Because there really was no term and it was really for point of discussion. Now, I put 30 days and as the chief mentioned. On page four, there's a termination provision and it says the agreement made terminate based on 60 days notice. So. That because of the unknowns here, the 60 day notice, I, I don't, I don't necessarily have any issues on the term here, I just. That's the board's call on what you feel comfortable with and honestly, any, any contract you deal with. There's always an element of good faith between the parties and I think there's ultimate good faith between the parties here. And I think if there are some, you know, twists and turns on this, I think we're going to react appropriately, both, both sides. So, and, and I wanted to put language in there to say, in case there was personnel in here. That had to be quarantined, that of course, we've got 30 days in here, that's, that's irrelevant. It's going to be until it's no longer necessary, but as, as an attorney, we're trying to, you know. Donner eyes, we cross our t's.
Yeah, you're also a checkbox, is you?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, but I think you have the, you read the term here, it was section I, so paragraph B, right?
Yes.
Here's that one. One.
Roman numeral one.
Okay.
And the chief made a good point about, you know, cleaning out, takes inside.
I think that's what it was, I think the chief's point was under Roman numeral, what is it? Six, six. Roman numeral six went from 60 to 15. And I totally understand the chief's point, where is, you know, they have someone here, they're just released out of quarantine. Probably take a little bit of time and logistics to get, you know, the appropriate individuals, appropriate contractors in here to clean the facility. So 15 days does seem a little bit. Harsh.
But also, I mean, doesn't that sort of conflict, if the, well, because as I read it, the term of the agreement is for a period of 30 days. And then you could do an additional periods of 30 days upon mutual agreement, so it's not automatic, it's like you have to keep renewing it, well, if you don't renew it, it's terminated.
I think the term would just be ongoing until this event's over.
Okay, so I see what you're saying.
So, so this termination of, if you have to give written notice termination is kind of moot because you don't renew it.
Right, there's a bit of an inconsistency, absolutely. I mean, we could do, we could do, if you wanted to do, three month, six month lease and keep in the, the 60 day termination language. Would that be, and again, I, I don't think this is going to come into play at all, hope to God that.
Yeah, I think, I think the 30 day terms was because of the uncertainty with how long.
Yes.
This will take, I'm sure, I'm sure Lake Bluff doesn't want to sign up for a six month, you know, lease of the building when, you know, they may only need it for a month.
Exactly.
So how, how can we be accommodating to those factors, you know, how, how can we? I don't think it'd be month to month, where?
Yeah, can we even get a month a month?
Well, that's kind of a.
Martin, can I speak to that for a minute?
Yes, please, by all means.
Okay, so, great conversation, and you were doing that, here's cause for my thought. Okay, so I'm looking at I, village, village use of station, it wasn't a concerted in the term. So the 30 days, you guys have just been talking and I appreciate the consideration of the cleanup and exit time. I'm not too worried about that, but just so we don't trip over each other there. This 30 day term with mutual renewal, I think addresses what you guys were just talking about, I don't really have a problem with that. But Jim, what's not defined here, or at least from my management point, is how do we achieve this mutual agreement to continue? We certainly don't want to uncover both bodies with haphoding to, you guys have another board meeting and we have to do this and we have to do that. If we can simplify how we both agree to be extended for another 30 days. If, for example, Jim, if you put, put in here empowering the.
Right.
The board president, the ability to exchange with the village administrator and a mutual agreement of the two of them, I think this would work.
Right. Yes. Right, no, that was my, that was my thought, Chief. That the board president could be authorized to continue it.
Yeah, I think we might have need to add a word or two there so that that's clear.
We can do that, assuming the board's okay with it, and I think they, I think they are. So basically, it's a month to month lease essentially that the board president can continue each month and I think the board is satisfied with that.
Okay.
Thanks, that's good.
Alright, so Jim, I'll let you get caught up.
No, no.
What kind of motion do we need here?
We, the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement.
Well, I mean, we still have to iron out a couple of details, right, so what I need, a motion authorizing, I might guess myself. The board president to continue finalizing the IGA with the representatives from Lake Bluff and.
Well, the motion is you're approving the IGA. Subject to final negotiations by the board president. With approval, approval by the district council, final approval district council. Something along those lines.
Okay, and that, and that's all appropriate, so then once we, once we iron that out.
In accordance with the terms we discussed here.
And then, yeah, in accordance with all the terms discussed here, sure, and so that's, so that's appropriate, once we iron those two, three details out. The appointed party from the board and assuming the board president, myself in this case, agrees with the village and with the board's district council. We sign off on it and then it's good to go, or would the board then would need to?
Yes. No, you would not need a meeting then.
Okay.
As long as they're authorizing approving it, subject to.
I think I got.
Subject to the corrections that we've made today and final approval by the local council.
So that was, where were we going to put, where were we going to make the adjustments for the term renewal? Was that going to be under Roman numeral 1B? Or we can put that, okay, so 1B will have. Term renewal. With the board.
Board president authorized.
And the insurance, I believe Drew asked under insurance to have an amount, would we put an amount there?
No, we, we don't need to put, we don't need to put an amount there, Drew, I, I don't, what, whatever their standard amount is, I'm okay, I'm assuming. I just want to make sure you had it, which I, I assumed that you had it, but I just put it in there, your municipality, I haven't ran into one that, that, that doesn't.
So, so would that be acceptable for you Drew, to leave item E, insurance as is?
We, we've discussed what, they, they've indicated they have the insurance.
I don't know if we lost Drew or not.
I'm sorry, I, I think it was on.
Okay, no, I, I was just asking if, if you think of item E, insurance under the revised proposed IGA. If that's acceptable to leave as is based on Jim's comments and, and your discussion with him.
Well, how about this, if you read the, inserting this language where it says the village shall maintain the commercial liability policy during the term of disagreement. commercial liability policy during the term of disagreement with coverage amounts, except to the district, but under no circumstances less than five million dollars, or a million dollars," put some number in there, and then that way you're covered some minimal level, there's a specific number that I know our insurance covers, and then I think that should be adequate.
So we'll put, no, under five million, I'm assuming you have that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and another, you know, another point, and Martin and I did discuss this, obviously, I would want to, and we talked to our insurance broker, indicating that we are going to rent this out, not that they would necessarily have a say-so in this, but we would, we would wanna notify them, so.
Okay, so, hello, I'm, uh, and then, uh, under termination, we're, we're going to revise that as well, right? Cause it was sixty, it's, it's fifteen in this draft, we're gonna revise that as well?
Yes.
Based, based on, you know, the, the board president, uh, authorizing renewal of, of, of the thirty days, uh, lease, right?
So the question is, what, what, do we leave it at sixty, even though we're going to month-a-month lease? I'm terribly concerned about this.
I'd say just thirty, thirty.
Thirty, keep everything consistent.
Okay. Makes sense.
What do you get suggested then?
Um, under, um, uh, item six termination, um, so ju- just, uh, putting it to thirty, thirty days.
I, I was gonna say thirty or forty-five, either one would be good. Thirty-four consistent with that other paragraph, or is it like thirty-four?
Yeah, that's kinda what I was thinking too, okay, so that's gonna change to thirty, um, item E, under insurance, we're gonna add an amount there, I believe you said, uh, not anything under, uh, less than five million, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, I know Jim, you're in prime, we can play with the curving, um, on item B, for the term renewal, uh, authorized by the board president.
Yes.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to, or, I'll make a motion, I can make a motion.
You can say all that stuff we talked, uh, go ahead.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the IGA, um, as presented with the, uh, with revisions under item B, allowing the, uh, board president, uh, the authorization to continue, uh, the lease renewal with Lake Bluff, um, item E, insurance, adding, uh, text in there with, uh, not less than five million dollars of insurance coverage, and item six termination, revising that to thirty days, and also allowing the board president, uh, to sign off on the IGA once these modifications have been, or, once these revisions have been done, um, with approval, uh, of board council. Leave that's the entire motion.
And I, you know, just to make it, and, and just to make it simple, and, you know, motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Lake Bluff, and authorize the board president to sign the IGA with revisions discussed during the meeting, and you outline those, uh, with final approval by the district's legal council.
Second.
No, I need someone to make a motion.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Mr. Cuban?
Yes.
I'm not arguing for it, but may I offer, may I offer an amendment to your, uh, motion?
By all means, please Chief.
I think there is one other thing to add, unless I've missed it, um, you also need to modify and clarify, um, previous, um, paragraph B, three, you know, big white here, that is broad coverage of all costs.
Yes, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, but Jim, you need to add, add the rate.
The way, the way that motion, I did that-
The way you had it, but yeah, I, I missed it, you had it covered. Okay, um, motion made by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Bernstein, seeing this is involved in money, the rule called, oh, Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Bernstein?
Yes.
Trustee Manowski, yes, uh, okay, so, uh, Chief Graf, uh, uh, Mr. Urban, uh, I will be working with you guys uh, once, uh, Jim and I have this revised, I'll contact you as soon as possible, and we'll go from there.
So if you just, if I may, I'd like to just say, you know, frankly, all of us, this is spectacular, um, I just can't tell you enough how excited I am that we've had an opportunity to do this together, I hope we don't eat you, but wow, I think this is wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you Chief, thank you Drew, I, I really do appreciate it, this is a fantastic idea, I'm, I'll, I'll go on a limb and say, you know, I'm, I'm glad I can, or this board can actually help you guys in this, in this fashion, uh, and I'm really glad that no one in Lake Bluff are working together again.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you gentlemen.
Fin- finishing this up, I'm available anytime, so whatever you wanna send it over, I know David as well, so.
Fantastic, and I'll probably take Jim a little bit to, to finish up, thank you, thank you gentlemen, have a great night.
Thanks guys.
Alright, so that's, um, agenda item five, anything else that we wanna bring up, uh?
Uh, I was found, I was, yeah, I was kinda thinking the other day about the, from realtor I've spoken to, uh, about a potential person renting the space, uh, it's like a store, or riding company, or whatever, and basically looking for a place to store some trucks, and have some office and dispatch space, and they don't really wanna get locked into a big, long, five-year, ten-year lease, I said, well, because, because they won't be here that long, but, um, so, and I, but I, I told them, we have something going on right now with Lake Bluff, I'll get back to them, and in the meantime, I'll have him do the groundwork for me and find out, you know, what kinda rent we could be expect or charge, or something like that, just so, when this is all done and over with, and if they're still interested, we already, we have everything already, you know, figured out.
Yeah, sounds good, yeah, sounds good, they just, uh, have the, the broker keep in contact, and let them know, hey, we're working with the village, you know, I don't know if you have to give the details, but I mean, the building will be clean. Um, and just, uh, let them know, yes, it's still a possibility, but obviously municipality to precedents.
Right.
Uh, for short-term.
Right, just for a couple, three months.
Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, unless there's anything else you wanna bring up with the agenda item number five? I'll look for, uh, anyone else, I'll, I'll make a motion in the meeting at seven oh one.
Second.
And anybody, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
No.
Never. Thanks guys.